Can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is both speaking and in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
Snideman.
I am here as well.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for July 11th, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we are on public comment on agenda items only. So this is your time for three minutes to speak to anything on the agenda. There's a regular public comment at the end. So this is public comment on agenda items only for three minutes. I'm going to look online first. Patrick, we only have Patrick online. Patrick, if you want to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
Canton resident.
Canton resident. Then you also had, was yours for the agenda items or no, yours was a public comment, the letter that you received to read for other public comment?
Yes, for non-agenda items.
Non-agenda items. Okay, anyone in the room for public comment?
Causeland.
Okay?
Good evening. Dana McCausland, representing 1981 and 2011 Lott's Road. I want to make comment on Agenda Item C1, the development of the Lott's Road Sewer District. In reading the write-up here, there is some statements here that are not quite factual. It says the ordinance will develop the process for the, is that me or is that, who it is? Anyhow, this district does not serve both sides of the road. It's patently unfair to the west side of the road where predominantly the most users would be. The sewer is going to be located on the east side of the road. So people who have to get to the sewer from the west side of the road are going to incur a very large cost to get to it. This project was discussed when the roadway was put in back in 2015. And the then, the administration at that time did not want to put the sewer on both sides of the street or they weren't interested in putting the sewer in at all. So here we are now at the year 2023 and we're putting a sewer in only on one side of the road. So this needs to be revisited. This is unfair to the landowners' residents. And as you see, even the people on Lott'sford, 46 parcels on Lott'sford, it would be impossible for them to get to that sewer cost-wise. Because they will have to come all the way down to Lott'sford and then cross Lott's Road to go to the east side where the sewer is going to be located. It should be just the opposite. The sewer should be located on the west side or it should be located on both sides. That's really how it should be done to be fair to all. And that would really help the area out tremendously. That area has been struggling for so many years. So now that the road is in, the water's in, but there's no users because there's no sewer. So that's, this is just furthering of the dilemma and raising of the cost. It's not going to help the area at all. The only, the only possible is it's, that's on the border side of the Westland side. So it's practically useless unless it has a loop, a loop that serves both sides, east and west. Then you have a true district. That's how the water should have been. The water's not, the water is bad too. You'd have to go under the road too, but it's not as bad as the sewer. The sewer is just going to be thousands and thousands of dollars to get in, more than thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. Probably well over a hundred thousand dollars to get under the road. The road would either have to be taken up section and re-installed or you'd have to bore under the, under the existing road. It's just, it's too, it's cost prohibitive. It'll just, it'll keep the zone the way it is, desolate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for agenda items only? Nope. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the payment of bills.
Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snideman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. The next item is a closed session, which is an update on union negotiations. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'm Supervisor. I move that we're going into closed session under the purpose, or under Section 81C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Snideman. Can we have a roll call to go into closed session, please?
Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snideman.
Aye.
Okay. We will be in closed session. When we come back out, we will restart the meeting. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to come back from closed session, please?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Growth Works. So Nick, if you could please come up to this podium over here. Introduce yourself and talk about Growth Works. Growth Works has been our partner for a long time. Do you have a presentation that you're showing, a slideshow?
Uh, I don't. It had crossed my mind to create a really whiz-bang PowerPoint presentation, I promise, but I didn't.
Okay.
Uh, if it's okay though, I have copies of some information. Thank you, Clerk Segrist. And on the right side are my speaking notes, so you can kind of follow along a little bit too.
Thank you. So this is Nick Griswold from Growth Works.
Well, good evening. Thank you Supervisor for the opportunity to come and say hello again. It's been a couple of years since I have been here last. So certainly appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, so if there's any questions, please stop me along the way. I did want to come and talk a little bit about Growth Works, who we are, what we do, just a little refresher course, 100 level course maybe on Growth Works. And then I'd also like to talk a little bit about the services that we provide along with some other great organizations inside the Canton Human Service Center in Cherry Hill Village. And then I'll close with a little bit discussion about what we're hoping to bring to, you know, potential new space in the coming months and years beyond. Just to give you an idea, Growth Works, we're located in downtown Plymouth. I can see the Penn Theater out my back window. I can, I'm tempted by Kill wins every time I walk out the front door. That's kind of where we're located, just north of Kellogg Park there. We've been there since 1971, so just a little while in that community. We've been in the Canton Human Service Center since 2003, and I talked about that since I started Cherry Hill Village. I'm sure you're all aware of that. But just to give you an idea who we are, to sum it up in a sentence, I think we're behavioral health care for kids and families. That means working with kids that are adjudicated in case management. We do clinical drug treatment services. We're all certified trauma practitioners. We do supervised parenting and visitation down in our Garden City office. We are most recently working with the Suicide Prevention Coalition. I'm sorry, what does that mean?
Talk over.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry about that. The Suicide Prevention Coalition, and we support youth assistance programming and just a lot more, but that gives you kind of a flavor of who we are. I did want to talk about while I was here, a couple of things. Youth assistance programming started right here in Canton Township long ago. That program is really evolved over the years and it's a, it's a great service to the community now. So kids that are maybe getting a little trouble with law enforcement, rather than going through the formal adjudication process, they're often referred right to our agency. We have an agreement with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office and the Third Circuit Court Juvenile Division to divert them even without sending the complaint down to the county, which saves a lot of time, especially these days during COVID and post-COVID. We can get kids into services within days instead of weeks or months sometimes that it would take. I don't know if any of you have kids. I have three. If I tell my daughter that she should have cleaned her room six months ago, she's going to say, what are you even talking about? Six months is a lifetime ago. So if we wait a long time to provide consequence and structure to kids, it really doesn't work out that well. It's not as effective. Getting kids in services right away is really where it's at. And this program allows us to do that. Now, on the odd occasion where the kids aren't successful in that programming and don't get things turned around, the police department can still file the complaint down and those kids would go to formal adjudication and end up on probation. And they come back to us for yet another round of discussion and services. One of the other things I'm really excited about that we're working on the last two years is the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Western Wayne County. This is seven Western Wayne County school districts, Plymouth, Canton, Northville, Livonia, South Redford, Redford Union, Garden City, and Wayne Westland. They have come together with the goal of reducing suicide, zero youth suicide, something I'm sure we can all agree on. And those seven member districts, we've helped them train over 4,000 of their school personnel. They represent about 60,000 students in Western Wayne County. We've trained over 4,000 school personnel in QPR. QPR is a, it's a crisis response model for non-behavioral health practitioners. So people like you and me, I imagine, to have those conversations with kids that are in crisis. We've also trained or helped train over 1,200 students, and that number grows every time we have health classes. So when we get in the fall, we'll have a new round of students that'll be training that so that they can do peer-to-peer assistance, which is really powerful. We're also helping the schools and area hospitals and mental health providers use a common assessment tool for depression and suicidality. That way, when the referral is made between school districts to the hospital, to a mental health provider, everyone's talking the same language. Everyone has the same forms. It just streamlines things, make things go fast, things go faster. We also held a school mental health conference last fall where we had two, over 200 mental health professionals from those areas, school districts, and others like Taylor Schools. We had some folks from outside Wayne County join us and provide a lot of great contacts, information, and a lot of the opportunity to network with hospital and behavioral health partners that day. We're doing another one of those. Again, it's on Election Day this fall because that's a common professional development day across all Wayne County school districts. And I'll make sure you guys get information for that so that you can see that it's happening. And just a couple of other things to note, I guess, you know, Supervisor, you mentioned that we've been a longtime partner. I was just on the Canton Township website and I found three things right off the bat that, that I feel like we're very like-minded about. Organizational assessments, that's something we've been through recently as well. I saw you guys completed one in 2021. We're always seeking improvement. Seems like Canton Township is always seeking improvement. And we're data curious too. So any of the data nerds up there, we can talk afterwards, but we're really curious of what the data tells us, which is something that sets us apart, I think, a little bit in terms of our space in behavioral health care. Really looking at information and trying to make decisions about what's best for treatment for kids and families based on what objectively the data is telling us. So that's a little bit about Growth Works. Growth Works, like I said before, has been in the Canton Human Service Center since 2003. In that building, we do a couple of different things. Basically, we do intakes, clinical group session for outpatient, intensive outpatient services, and also adolescent treatment services. Each group is conducted by at least two Growth Works staff members, usually more than two. And that really helps us with individual safety, making sure all the voices are heard, et cetera. And all those staff, just so you know, by the way, are master's-prepared social workers, psychologists, licensed counselors, that sort of thing. To give you a little background on the Human Service Center, at least our role in it, we established agreement together, Canton Township. We provide building and tenant management, so we're the onsite, day-to-day manager of the building. Habitat for Humanity, Canton Community Foundation, some others have been long-term tenants within the Canton Human Service Center. We routinely assess the safety environment, respond to threats. A couple of years ago, or I think it was last year, we installed a camera system within the buildings. There's card access. We manage all the card access and the security around credentials. We manage all the telecom IT management. We do a lot of updates to the inside of the building. So a couple of years ago, we put in new carpet. We painted the interior downstairs and upstairs. We do cleaning service, that kind of thing. All the things it takes to really run the building. And the building department, Canton Township, is a great partner for that as well as those things that rise above and beyond the level of probably what we're capable of. Carpet is about our limit and then anything else above that. We need some help and they've been great partners in that all along the way. Moving along here, I did want to talk about what kind of, what kind of kids and adults are in the program so, that get served in the Canton Human Service Center now. So the adults that come usually come from one of the drug treatment courts that are in our area. That could be Plymouth. Livonia has a drug treatment court. Redford Township just started one. Those folks that have chosen a sobriety court alternative to, you know, maybe more serious consequences. If you've ever participated or seen someone participate in a drug treatment program or had discussions about it within the court, it's, it's got a lot of rules. It's very driven on sort of metrics and a lot of obligations to complete, including treatment is one of those. And so we're a treatment provider for a lot of the drug treatment courts in the area. And so they'll come to us for assessment and then ongoing treatment, and then we'll report back to the court about their progress towards their goals. And then the other thing we do is we do treatment for adolescents that are in there. So kids age 12 to 19 would be in our programming down there. Those kids are usually on formal probation for certain offenses that they've completed and been adjudicated through the Third Circuit Court down in Wayne County, downtown in Detroit. And just to give you an idea of what those kids are now, I will say, if you go to GWcares.org, that's our website, you go down to the bottom page, there's all kinds of data links down there. The data, if you scroll down, is all real-time. So you can go in and, and look at our data and you can see, for example, how many kids are on formal probation from the township of Canton. And then you can drill down further and you can see demographic information about them. You can see the offenses that they've been adjudicated on, that kind of stuff. Just to give you an idea, we try to be as transparent as possible with that. But just looking back at the data, this year, the kids that have been receiving services down the Canton Human Service Center, 75% of those have committed a class four or class five offense, and that's what's landed them on probation. What does that mean? A class four offense, I just grabbed some random ones, simple assault, reckless driving, larceny, all misdemeanor larceny offenses, trespassing, my favorite, pulling a false fire alarm. That's, that's an oldie but a goodie, isn't it? And then class five offenses would be incorrigibility, truancy, possession of tobacco underage, those sorts of things. So just, just to maybe address any concerns about the types of kids that are in those services, you know, these, these are kids that are getting into relatively minor trouble. In fact, all those class five offenses are considered status offenses, which means someone over the age of 18, it's actually not illegal to do most of the things that are on this list. So it gives you just kind of an idea of the kids that are treated in those facilities. And then just a, just a quick look, I guess, at the, the future, our vision for a new location. A safe space for kids and families to really get the help that they need, a place for clients to get outpatient behavioral health care and support resources. So no one stays overnight at our facilities. I know I get that question a lot. That's not the case. We do outpatient services only out of that facility. And really something that honestly this community can be proud of and really has been proud of for the going on three decades now, that we've enjoyed a relationship with the township of Canton, but also serve as a hub and to be proud of the fact that you serve as a hub for a lot of Western Wayne County communities to get help. And a welcoming place that doesn't feel like public health care. When I first came to Growth Works, you know, I, I didn't know a lot about the organization, to be honest. And so I asked around, you know, what do we do? What do we do? And to his credit, the CEO who founded the organization, you know, I asked him what we did and he said, why don't you tell me what we do? And it took me probably two weeks to think about that, to come up with something. And what I came up with is the quality of a high-level, private behavioral health care experience without the red tape and little or no cost to its users. I think that's what best describes it. A lot of us in this room, I'm going to guess, have healthcare coverage. I don't know if you guys have, you don't have to admit this, but I will. You know, I see a counselor on a regular basis. I call her my expensive friend. She's a great friend and she's very expensive. And, you know, I'm fortunate to be able to have access to that, to have access to health insurance that helps me pay for the $175 for 45 minutes that I'm charged each time I see my expenses. You see why I call her my expensive friend. And, you know, there's so many of us that just don't have the access to that. And we really believe at Growth Works that they shouldn't receive any less experience than all of us receive when we're accessing private health care. That's really all I had. I know I went really fast, but I didn't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any staff have any questions or comments? Board members, questions or comments?
Something on, so my family lost my niece to suicide in, a couple of years ago at Salem. And so I worked with the school and to bring in a suicide prevention program. Now, what is different about yours?
Yeah.
It was okay to say we did for a while where we had the kids in the cafeteria and we would give them information to talk to counselors. And if they saw their friend in trouble, they would go and, you know, report it to a counselor. And that seemed to work. And also we offered counseling to the students, you know, Kate was on the board then. But I mean, that's, that's a pretty tragic thing when your classmate or somebody you're teaching or, you know, a family member does this. But, so what are you going to do different? Because your expertise has always been...
Yeah, you're right on Supervisor about those being some of the dark days. So before I came to Growth Works, I was an assistant superintendent in South Redford Schools. And we had two completed suicides in my eight years there, and they were the two worst days of my professional career. And, and it's just amazing how much of a devastating impact something like that can have on not only the kids that are in there, but the staff, a community, close communities, especially Canton, I would call amongst that, South Redford certainly. I think what sets us apart is that we're not really a program. So if, if I can give you the quick backstory, superintendent from one of the districts called us and said, we've got this group, they're meeting, we meet on a monthly basis. We're talking out all these ideas about how we can bring more resources into schools to help kids that are really struggling or in crisis. And what you, what could you do for us? And I said, I don't really know, but what we, what we determined through that conversation was those school officials are all really, really busy people and they're, they're handling a lot of different things. So I deal mostly in that group, mostly with like student service directors, special ed directors, those types of folks. They're very busy people. And so they come together and they have great conversation and no one was really there to do kind of the running around in between those great conversations. So that's all we offered to do was I said, okay, we'll hire somebody and we'll make them the full-time runner, the implementer of your great ideas. And so that includes things like okay to say, QPR, all kinds of different resources that are going into all these different school districts. But really taking the opportunity to look at what school districts in one community are doing well and bring that to other communities and then really connect them, the work the last couple of years has been really connecting them to all the behavioral health systems that are available. It can be hard to bridge those gaps. A lot of those folks haven't talked to each other in a number of years. You know, I talked with one, I won't mention their name, but one very well-meaning school, public health official, you know, and she said, yeah, when, when people are having trouble, I tell them to go straight to the ER. Have you guys ever gone to the ER lately during COVID or post-COVID? Pretty tough, pretty tough to get in. You sit in your car for hours. And so that's just an example of how the world has changed and evolved. But we're, in some ways, we're just a little stuck in our sort of routines about what we do when, when kids are struggling. So it was really opening up all those doors and having people from the hospital come in and say, you know, please don't just blindly send them to the ER. Let's get a common system going and then you can basically refer over a packet and someone will be there to greet them, you know, at the hospital and make sure they get the services they need. So, you know, it sounds simple, but when you're trying to do it on a scale of 60,000 students, you know, seven districts, that's seven boards of education, seven superintendents, it's a lot to get them all rowing in the same direction. And so we just try to be that, maybe that tie that binds across the communities.
Basically, the goal between the school district and the program, finding the right program for that particular school, was had the tragedy or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And not, and to be honest with you, not programs that our agency provides directly. In a lot of cases, we're using partner, partner agencies across all of Wayne County to provide those, those services. Yeah, we're just trying to be the, the universal connector, I guess.
Also, in terms of graduations, do you ever allow community members to come watch the graduations?
Uh, good question. So we don't, we don't do a lot around like real formalized graduations. We have private, you know, services when people leave within our programs and, and things like that. Just to pivot maybe to a different, different idea there, we recently had a client who had some pretty serious charges, came to us with a lot of issues going on in their family, just graduated from Wayne Westland Schools this year. So we, you know, celebrated that as a Growth Works family. We had clapped them down the hallway. We had cake. We had all those things that honestly, you know, bought prom tickets, the cap and gown, things that, you know, the family really wasn't able or willing to provide in that particular instance so that this, this guy could have a little bit more of a normal, you know, those milestone moments that maybe we all take a little bit for granted that we had as kids. You know, a lot of folks skip right over those that are, that are our kids, the people that we see.
If I may, I have the luxury of serving on the board of Growth Works and on the township board. And one of the reasons I was honored to serve on the board of Growth Works is when you look at specifically the work that's done here in Canton with the CMO. And when you talk about what the CMO is, because like, you know, in government, we use acronyms all the time and, you know, CMO, Care Management Organization. So what is that? It's essentially, and the story behind kind of how that happened, and it's a long story, so I won't bore anybody, but essentially Wayne County was failing in their probation department for youth. It was expensive and kids would get lost at the Third Circuit. And there would be no accountability where you needed accountability, and there might be too much accountability where somebody was skipping school or pulling a fire alarm. And the county executive's office at the time made a really smart decision to start blocking grant money out intentionally with CWW with the Western Wayne Counties in particular, but also creating the CMO organizations and really ask the nonprofit community to step in and do a lot of that work. And so what's cool, when I did, because I did go to the Growth Works Cares website and I did look at those numbers, and those numbers are unheard of in similar probationary departments in larger urban counties anywhere in the country. I know anecdotally individuals who entered into the CMO program at Growth Works at a period where they were functionally illiterate, capable of reading Dr. Seuss books at the age of 14, 15 years old. And they went on to go get master's degrees in thermodynamics and to go work for the United States Navy as a result of what the CMO was able to do and what Growth Works as an organization was able to do for them. That's important, and it's important to do in a community like Canton because of stigmas we have about crime, about recidivism, about juvenile delinquency, about adjudication, about substance abuse disorder, about mental illness or mental health in general. But when I see that 92% of the youth remain in their initial probation level without escalation, that is, that is not typical. That 92% of individuals that come in with a class four are going to stay at a class four. And in that period, maybe one, maybe two years, they're not going to elevate to a higher class. 98.4% of youth were free of a new felony convictions during their enrollment in the program. 93% of youth remained free of felony convictions two years after completing the case management program. 73% of youth served were abstained from drugs and alcohol because, as we all know, under the age of 21, recidivism is huge. Once you tend to get in the system, it's damn near impossible to get out of the system. I don't, and then seeing 41 individuals able to go through and get a GED or do online school support. That's important things. Those are things, you know, these are, these are students that already failed in the school system. These are students or children that don't have the, the family support or structure system that can, that can maintain their behavior. These are individuals who have been interacting with law enforcement in some capacity or another. And I like the way you talked about Growth Works starting in downtown Plymouth because of assumptions we have about downtown Plymouth being this colonial, pristine community with these large home values and walkable streets and boutique shops and stigmas we have about adjudication and youth and delinquency. I like that you mentioned the long history in Cherry Hill Village and other small community that has like a high socioeconomic, you know, background, has a pretty, pretty healthy property values. Because communities like Canton and other, other communities, they try to put this kind of stuff away. They try to hide this kind of stuff in the shadows. And we have decades of failure at hiding this stuff and putting it in the shadows. And I like interrupting patterns, dysfunctional patterns, and that's what this program does. So I'm super excited about continuing the partnership. Obviously, the board will expect me to be recusing myself from that, and I will be under our tax ordinance, but I'm grateful. And, you know, the reason I associate with Growth Works outside of my personal history is because that success rate is, from a data standpoint... is because that success rate is, from a data standpoint, unmatched anywhere else with any nonprofit that I'm, I've ever looked at. So thank you. Thanks for your presentation today.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? After, afterwards. That's okay, that's okay, that's all right. Any other questions on the board? So we have a social worker and obviously you work on our diversion program. So if a youth gets into trouble, our police department, you know, we will offer Growth Works. But then if somebody wants to, if, if somebody calls our social worker and says, I'm having trouble with my youth, where do I go? And they aren't substance abuse, would we still refer them to you?
Yep, absolutely. So we'll, we'll help them in any way we possibly can. We, we do a lot more than substance use. Like I said, we're, we're all trauma practitioners now, so you can really, you know, link a lot of stuff back to trauma. And I think we found out honestly that we were really trauma practitioners all along because we've always been insert of the root cause for folks' addiction and, and really looking to treat that in order to basically solve the symptom that, that derives from that trauma. And then we have, I think one of the benefits of being in, in this work as long as we have is that we've got great relationships with partners all across the mental health space. So if we, if we can't do the work directly, we can often get people right into other places to, that can get the help that they need.
So also, it's not even just youth, it's adults also.
That's right. Yeah, sorry, I focus on the kids a lot, but yeah, of course, you know. Just, just two maybe parting thoughts if I could. One thing, in your packet, my business card's in there, I wrote my cell phone number on the back. If you ever have any questions, you want to talk about anything, if you would like to come to the Canton Human Service Center with me and, and meet some of the fine folks that actually do the work and don't just talk about it like me, I'd be happy to do that with you. If you'd like to come up to Colonial Downtown Plymouth, I'll buy you an ice cream and we can, we can look at the services that are provided there as well. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, we, we've been in the work of juvenile justice for 20, well, longer than that, but we've been operating the formal, the formal program, the CMO for 23 years this year. And it's given us a great opportunity. A lot of the, the clients that, that were with us in those early years, we still stay connected to. And about three years ago, we formed a Juvenile Advisory Council. So it's people that have graduated from our programming and that have wanted to come back and really, whoops, sorry, sorry, really give back to their community. And so they organized around a group. One of the first things they did is create a little booklet that has real, real explanations for the terms that they'll hear in court, which is, which is really important and powerful. And in juvenile court, Deputy Supervisor Haver can attest to this, all the words are different. I, I don't know any, you know, it's a, it's not conviction, it's adjudication. It's, you know, we, we don't sentence to time, we sentence to treatment. And so even if you've, like me, watched a lot of Law and Order on TV, you still don't really understand what's going on. So imagine being a young kid and not really understanding what's happening while a lot of other adults decide your future, your immediate future, and maybe your long-term future and not really understanding what's happening. So that was one of the first things they said, we didn't understand any of these terms. And so they're off and running on a lot of, a lot of different issues. They often go in and train jurists down in the Third Circuit Court about, you know, different topics, different resources that are available to them. So it's really an opportunity, we're seeing now these generations start to give back to future generations, which is, which is really powerful and it, it means so much more when it comes from someone who's had that, that real life experience. So, thank you.
So Nick, I don't know if you're going to stick around, but if you, if anyone has any questions, you can go into the
Oh, sure.
lobby and talk or unless you want to stay to the end of the meeting and talk or?
Uh, am I under oath? Do I have to promise?
You have to stay here until nine o'clock tonight. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, right. Great, thank you.
So are you going to be available?
Yes, I'll be around for a few minutes at least.
Okay, so if anybody wants to speak to him in the lobby, that's, that's possible.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item, oh, hang on. Consider second reading of an ordinance. To amend Chapter 74, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2 for the Lots Road Sewer District. Item C2. Consider increasing one blanket purchase order for Municipal Services Division. C3. Consider approving an amendment to the 2023 fire budget. Item C4. Consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to Zoll Medical. Item C5. Consider request to increase, decrease fire department blanket purchase orders.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. On the general calendar, the first item is G1. Consider the purchase of a John Deere 3046R compact utility tractor with grooming mower deck.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the purchase order contract to Hudson John Deere in the amount of $51,328.59 for the purchase of a new 3046R compact utility tractor and a grooming mower deck.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Since 2011, Public Works has been mowing the right of way along Michigan Avenue from Hanan Road to Rossenville Road under contract with MDOT. Additionally, Public Works mows vacant parcels and noxious weeds to ensure compliance with township ordinances. These tasks have traditionally been completed using residential zero, zero turn mowers. Adding this new John Deere tractor and mowing deck will improve our mowing efficiencies with our mowing operations. The addition of this tractor has been planned in the five-year capital improvement program. Funds were approved in the 2023 Department of Public Works budget for the purchase of this John Deere compact utility tractor. The quote received from Houston John Deere coincides with the MI deal contract number Michigan AG Grounds and Roadside as listed. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing else to add.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2. Consider award of residential ASR roadway evaluation to Spalding de Decker.
Madam Supervisor, I move to issue a purchase order in the amount of $31,000 to SDA to perform a residential ASR roadway evaluation and the attached budget adjustment for $31,000.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Engineering Services is requesting to issue a purchase order to Spalding de Decker for residential ASR roadway evaluation in the amount of $31,000. This is an effort to inventory all the local subdivision Wayne County jurisdiction roads and the township for failures due to ASR, which is alkali silica reaction in concrete. It's an industry-wide commonly seen accelerated deterioration in concrete, particularly in roads, curbs and sidewalks. There are many roads throughout the township that are affected by ASR. Those affected include local subdivision roads under the jurisdiction, jurisdiction of Wayne County. ES will use this evaluation to create an inventory of those local roads affected by ASR. It's the first step towards an actual plan to repair and replace the defective concrete. The work is broken into three phases. Number one, data collection and review. Number two, field evaluation and three, material testing. ES is requesting the approval of all three phases should they be needed. However, SDA will be asked to complete phases one and two, with three being completed only by request of ES if necessary. This work will be performed under current master service agreement. Proposal was requested from SDA because they have been the consultant on all local road millage program work since its inception. They're familiar with the township's road network, have performed all of our Pacer rating evaluations and have some of the background data and knowledge required to do the ASR evaluation quickly and efficiently. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Nothing additional. That pretty much covered it.
Questions or comments? Kate?
I was just wondering, it looks like part of the background info said that it's including local subdivision roads under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. Are roads that are not under the jurisdiction of Wayne County that are in subdivisions, are they included or no?
No.
Okay. Do, and I'm not familiar with exactly which subdivisions are the jurisdiction of Wayne County, but I'm wondering, is Sunflower included in this?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Summer?
This is for the program that we've recently got state funding for. Good, I'm glad to see this happening and moving forward. I know a number of our residents, especially those in Sunflower and other subdivisions that have been dealing with ASR for a long time and really utilizing funds through the Road Mill and Match Program. I'm glad to see this moving forward and being able to provide some assistance to those residents.
Stephen?
Thank you. So glad to see this is happening. My question is, I don't know if this is the case for some of the subdivisions that have ASR, but in many cases in our community, there's neighborhoods that the homeowners association isn't very strong or is inactive or something like that. So if ASR ends up existing in that neighborhood, is there some approach that we're going to take with the homeowners there to figure out how they can use the road millage program to fix it?
Yeah, we've been working with the supervisor's office and the deputy supervisor on some options to present. So once the study is done, we'll come back before to see what the totality of the issue is and then from there, make a decision on how to proceed. And that, we'll come forward with a couple of different options.
Thank you.
Anya?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I agree with Summer and that this is a good program to use our, the state funding that we got for ASR replacement and I'm, so because my neighborhood is neighboring Sunflower and I have seen how bad the roads are there, especially Swanmere, so I am looking forward to the upcoming changes.
I had talked earlier at the Growth Works presentation about disrupting dysfunctional patterns and how we as a society handle ASR is dysfunctional. And you can't understate the significance of our legislative partners and in particular Ranji, Representative Puri, in securing this funding because the budget process in the state legislature is very competitive and Canton pays a lot of taxes. And frequently for years, we've seen those taxes find their way all throughout the state of Michigan. And that's how it works sometimes. You win some, you lose some. But by securing this funding and bringing it back here and allowing us to tackle a very technical, chemical problem that exists in large scale in Canton Township is huge. I can't wait to see the results of what you find out of how much of the concrete in Canton Township is rife with ASR. You know, and this is not typical of just cracks in bad, in roads or bad roads. It's something is like the, the road itself has concrete cancer. It's essentially, once water gets in, it causes a chemical reaction which makes the concrete explode internally and it begins to chip away. And that's why when the county tried to address Canton Center Road in 2017, it was to no avail. They cut out bad sections of Canton Center Road, which created beautiful, straight little lines that the water got into and began to explode the neighboring sections of that road. The concrete began to explode in and around the brand-new, beautiful concrete, which was great that all the work in 2017 looked fantastic, but all the work from a decade earlier looked horrible and was getting worse within a year. And the public sees that and says, what's the point of fixing these roads? They look worse within a year and so on and so forth. And so if you're not strategic about ASR, you might as well be burning money in a barrel. And that's why I think having a technical plan that is driven by data and not philosophy and not politics is going to be fantastic. So I'm super excited about what this means for the township. And I'm super excited that last year, our legislative partners were able to secure $5 million for, so that we could completely tear out Canton Center Road, all of the ASR and pour brand-new concrete that did not have ASR. We have been aggressively as an organization combating alkali silica reaction. And of all the things, when I'm, my time here is done on this board, yeah, I like elections, that's obvious when I talk about it too much, but this is probably the single most important thing that I will hang my hat in retirement and say, this is the mark I made in Canton Township in a small part. Because I think it's significant. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Diane?
Everybody else said something. Yeah, I just want to also, I appreciate Representative Puri and the hard work that he's done fighting to, to bring dollars and to, to take care of some of this ASR because it has been an issue for a long time. And I'm excited, Jade, that you're going to be able to, to get all the numbers so that we know exactly where we need to fight this. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been great that we've been able to go to our state representatives and state legislatures and ask for the help and they, they heard us and this is great. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G3. Consider purchase order for Crimbo Lee Nursery for tree planting services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the issuance of a purchase order from expenditure account number 101-585.801 underscore 0050 to Crimbo Lee Nursery Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. At its meeting on August 23rd, 2022, the Township Board of Trustees approved the 2022-23 street planting bid from Crimbo Lee Nursery Incorporated and the issuance of purchase order for 2022. For 2023, $100,000 is budgeted in the tree program fund for planting and a purchase order in the amount of $100,000. Okay, that's a duplicate. For Crimbo Lee Nursery is recommended for 2023. Tree planting will primarily take place along major roads and on township property. Planting services include proper mulching, watering and staking at the time of planting as well as a follow-up watering and a one-year warranty. So just as background for everyone, Canton Township maintains several thousands of years located along, several thousands of trees located along major roads and on township property. Part of the program includes planting of new trees. Canton has issued an invitation to bid for street planting services in 2022 and the bid specs called for unit prices dozens of trees, species, species, which are reviewed by the township's landscape architect consultant. Crimbo Lee has previously performed tree planting services in Canton and the planting and warranty services have been satisfactory. As a result, the Township Board of Trustees approved the 2022-23 street tree planting from Crimbo Lee Nursery. So the services will be paid by the Municipal Services Division and bid prices were submitted and the prices for 22 and 23 are the same. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
Just to say that you saw some trees come down around the Township Administration Building over the weekend and this, that's all part of tree maintenance is sometimes taking down trees that are at their end of life or are diseased or could be breaking and, and cause damage. So this is all part of the process, so this is going to help us replace those trees around this building and then also throughout the township.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Kate?
I just wanted to say that I appreciated that the list of species was attached and I'm glad that there's a lot of variety there.
We also were going to, didn't we get some fruit trees also recently?
I believe that was a Leisure Services initiative.
Okay, so are we going to, is that, are we going to have like a ceremony or something or Arbor, I think we should plant those.
I don't see anyone here from Leisure Services. Sorry.
I know that some of those will end up
But I can follow up.
as Zibwez. They've got that location, so let's do, let's do it.
Great. I retreat planted.
I have a question. I looked at the list of trees, but Crimbo Lee's is famous for having palm trees along Ford Road. Why don't I see palm trees on the list of approved street trees?
If you notice, they don't have them anymore, so that's why they're not on the list.
Oh, okay.
Relysing those removal services pretty quickly.
That indigenous?
Not indigenous to Michigan, no.
The native, is that a native tree? Okay.
All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4. Consider purchase orders for PPM tree service and Arbor Care for tree removal and pruning services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the issuance of purchase orders from the expenditure account 101-585 dot 930 underscore 0070 to PPM tree services at Arbor Care for an amount not to exceed $75,000 and from expenditure account number 101-752 dash 50 dot 930 underscore 0072 to PPM tree services and Arbor Care for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski.
Question made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. At its meeting on August 23rd, 2022, the Township Board of Trustees approved the '22 through '24 tree removal and pruning services bid from PPM tree service and Arbor Care and the issuance of purchase orders for 2022. For '23, there's a $75,000 budgeted by the Municipal Services Department and $30,000 budgeted by Leisure Services Department for tree removal and pruning, and purchase orders are recommended for these amounts in 2023. Tree pruning and removal will primarily take place along major roads and on township property. Removal services include tree removal, stump grinding, and site restoration with topsoil, backfill, grass seed, and straw. Director Smith, you want to add anything to that?
No, I'm good.
Questions or comments? Kind of goes along with one above it. Kate?
Just hoping that we don't have another ice storm.
Away from the power lines. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approving the payment of the 2023 through '24 Pro QA software licensing and support renewal and the purchase of two additional licenses.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the payment of 2023-24 annual licensing and support renewal for Pro QA and the purchase of two additional licenses in the amount of $32,950 to Priority Dispatch Corporation.
Question made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Fire Department is requesting to purchase two Pro QA software licenses due to the addition of two dispatch stations. Additionally, each new and current license requires an annual maintenance, service, and support agreement. Priority Dispatch has quoted the two licenses, and the annual maintenance agreement for all six licenses is at $32,950. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Not really. I just, this is for the additional two stations in our dispatch that we expanded, so hopefully we can get the bodies in there to fill it up after that.
Almost done. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider FOIA 23 dash 457 appeal.
Madam Supervisor, can we, I don't know if I want to make a motion right now.
Right.
Do you want to just read the summary?
On Tuesday, July 25th, the Public Safety Records Department received a fax FOIA appeal from the Sam Bernstein Law Firm in regards to the partial denial of their FOIA request 23457. We are asking the Board to consider this appeal to the denial issued on May 15, 2023. So Clerk Seeger, if you want to give the background.
Yeah, the Sam Bernstein Law Firm entered a FOIA request for a copy of the initial dog bite report and all supplemental reports, including any photos and/or videos. The report number, their client, Mariana Villegas, on May 15, the FOIA was partially redacted and denied under the Freedom of Information Act, Section 13.1. A public body may exempt from disclosure as a public record under this act any of the following. A, information of a personal nature, if public disclosure of the information would constitute a clearly warranted invasion of an individual's privacy. And then Z, information that would identify or provide a means of identifying a person that may, as a result of disclosure of the information, become a victim of a cybersecurity incident or that would disclose a person's cybersecurity plans or cybersecurity-related practices, procedures, methods, results, organizational information, systems, infrastructure, hardware, or software. On July 25th, 2023, the Sam Bernstein Law Firm faxed the Public Safety Records Department requesting an appeal. This was forwarded to the supervisor's office to be heard at the next scheduled board meeting. That's all the information I have outside of the letter from the Bernstein Law Firm, because I was not a part of the decision to deny the FOIA. It was recommended by Public Safety and upheld by Corporation Counsel. So I don't know if your office wants to discuss that, or Corporation Counsel, General Counsel, or Chief Counsel, or whatever the title is. I don't remember. Sorry, Joe. Deputy Supervisor?
That's okay. Yeah, I mean, the supervisor's office didn't make any decision with regard to this appeal. On behalf of Public Safety, I would just say that Public Safety does have a policy to redact the names and identifying information of witnesses to crimes, potential crimes, that are listed in police reports. And that's why this potential witness's name was redacted from this report. It was in accordance with departmental policy. The appeal to this policy that's being made by the Sam Bernstein Law Firm indicates essentially that, you know, when it comes to exemptions under FOIA, under Michigan FOIA, you know, the word in the statute is may, not shall. You know, information may be redacted if it's of a personal nature, if public disclosure of the information would constitute a clearly, it says warranted, and the RBA should say unwarranted invasion of an individual's privacy. Or item Z, information that would identify or provide a means of identifying a person that may, as a result of disclosure of the information, become a victim of cybersecurity incident, or that would disclose a person's cybersecurity plans or cybersecurity-related practices, procedures, methods, results, organizational information, systems, infrastructure, hardware, or software. I believe the Sam Bernstein Law Firm is not only requesting that we not redact the witness's name and identifying information, but also the email address of the witness, which is listed in the police report as well, which is the reason that subsection Z under 13.1 was cited as a basis of the denial. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that the Board may have in deliberating this issue.
Real quick, it seems like I read somewhere where the witness agreed that they didn't to let, to have their name be known, right?
I don't know that the witness agreed to have their name disclosed, but I do believe that the witness did not ask for their name to be redacted from the police report due to privacy concerns. That redaction was made in accordance with the Police Department's policy on this issue.
Questions or comments, or Michael?
We've discussed this in private, but, and I'll discuss it in public. This exemption, this Public Safety exemption in particular, I think sometimes gets used very broadly, and sometimes inappropriately. There are lots of times where individuals will want to know who the witnesses are in a circumstance like, let's say, if there's an allegation of police brutality, or if there's an instance where somebody feels like their civil rights may have been infringed. When we had our discussion about the camera surveillance systems, the license plate readers, I had expressed a concern about the need to exempt that information for this reason. And at that time, the Director of the ACLU for Michigan was here, and she indicated that oftentimes, the ACLU does not like that position, because that adversely puts the ACLU in a bad spot where they have a hard time defending their clients, because they don't have access to the exact same information that public safety agencies might So for me, there's an exemption for ongoing criminal investigations. If something's going to trial and a witness is going to be, is not made public yet, there's an exemption for that. But those aren't really the facts and circumstances here, because in this instance, there's a dog bite, and there were no charges pressed. However, somebody is seeking civil, they now want civil relief, and they want to go talk to the people who saw the dog bite situation. And I look at, there is case law in Michigan, in Tobin v. the Civil Service Commission in The court specifically said that the names of the citizens and officer involved in the assault were withheld under the privacy exemption of MCL 15.2431A, which is what we're referencing. In the absence of special circumstances that are not present here, an individual's name is not, quote, "information of a personal nature" within the meaning of MCL 15.2431A. That's a Michigan court who is saying that they didn't meet the standard for using that exemption under those circumstances. And Michigan courts have, I have a list of four or five times in the last three decades, said, no, your name is not personal information, and giving that out in this circumstance is not an unwarranted, it's not an invasion of privacy. Much like if you're a registered voter in Canton Township, the public benefits by having access to your name and your address. Many people like to go out and make sure that people actually live in those buildings, that they're not a fraudulent voter registration. It's how you ensure public integrity in that process. It's scary for people, because their information isn't private. Now, the state does shield your email and your phone number. If you give that to a clerk, I can't give that information out, because what good would that do, me giving that out to anybody in public? So I think for me, I have a hard time agreeing with this denial on the grounds of shielding the name. What does seem without, I would be in support of keeping up the cybersecurity exemption, because I don't think it's appropriate to give out an email if an individual has given an email to an officer for a follow-up statement. That would be something, I think, that an individual would not expect to be made public. But in this case, an individual did not ask for their name to be withheld, and the word "may" is imperative, and I just, you know, Michigan law says every document is the property of the people of the state of Michigan unless exempted by law. There's an exemption here with the word "may," but the case law is kind of iffy, and I just don't see the public good in withholding that name.
Summer?
Thank you for that, Clerk Seeger. I had been reading through the documentation that we received, and I wondered if I was missing something, because it didn't seem like there was a public safety benefit to redacting this information. And it seemed more discretionary and not mandatory. And I think as public officials, we have to be extremely careful when we use that discretion, especially when not mandated by law. I would tend to agree with you about the email exception, though. I think we should protect that information, but I don't have an issue with providing the name of the witness.
Kate?
Yeah, I think Summer, or Trustee Foster summed it up exactly how I was thinking, because I, too, looked through this, and I did not understand the public safety benefit of this, which I don't think there was one. So it was just more of a matter of doing what they always do.
I agree with both our trustees that there is no harm in giving the information as requested, and, you know, at least the name of the person, so that they can be contacted. But we don't want to give their more details of the person, their email, or things like that, because that is something of a personal information that they might not want.
Okay, any other? Steven?
Thank you. Not disagreeing with everybody and what they're saying, but Deputy Director, is what, I just want to understand, in terms of, in cases where there might be witness intimidation possibilities, is it, are we giving up our, by allowing for this one to go through, are we giving up our ability to protect witnesses in the future? And obviously, I don't know a lot of details of this case or other cases, but I just wanted your advice on that or thoughts.
Very good question. I think probably one of the rationales for the Police Department's policy to redact names of witnesses in police reports is to protect them from witness tampering or witness intimidation, particularly in crimes involving violence, domestic violence cases, sexual assault, the four capital crimes in Michigan, murder, assault with intent to commit murder, armed robbery, and CSC1. And so, in this, this case kind of differs from a case like that, in that the victim in this case is not seeking prosecution, so they're not seeking to make this dog bite a criminal matter in any way. They are seeking civil redress through the Sam Bernstein Law Firm. They have called Sam. And, and, and so there's maybe less of a public policy rationale to protect this information and protect this witness from potential harm. I will say that there is a case that indicates that the core purpose of the FOIA is to release information that significantly contributes to public understanding of the operations and activities of the government. That's clearly not what's being requested here. The information that's being requested here is for a civil lawsuit. And so there's, there is, you know, some gray area here for the Board to consider.
So if we chose to release it, that in the future, we would still have the option not to release the same information?
Yes.
For other cases? Okay, thank you.
And I would just say, if you do read court cases about the use of this exemption, every single judge is imperative that this cannot be a default position. This has to be determined on a case-by-case basis. So the FOIA coordinator is supposed to consult with PD on every FOIA request and make a determination if the facts and circumstances under this scenario would warrant the use of this exemption. So to have, quote, "a policy" would be a statement that could put you in legal, you could, you would essentially be, you could be, you know, you might get, you might get slapped by a court. You could still win, but the court would say, you cannot just have as your default that you use this exemption on every single FOIA. It must be decided on a case-by-case basis. You have to look at the facts and circumstances of cases. So, yes.
Well, since we're looking at exempting the email, what about the phone number? Because that is redacted.
I'm not, I'm not certain that they request, so if we look at the request, what was the request for? Did we have that?
Yes, there's a letter.
So if it would please everybody, I'll make a motion.
His name and addresses.
Yeah, craft the motion.
But the cybersecurity exemption is primarily attached to the email address. And, okay, so I will, Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board reverse in part the exemption. Let me get, let me get there. My PDF is acting up. I can't wait till we get to Civic Clerk. Madam Supervisor, I move that the, that the Board deny the appeal in part regarding the cybersecurity exemption for, for email, maintain, and then maintain, and grant the appeal with, or I'm sorry, then deny the appeal in part regarding the, I'm sorry. I'm so confused. Madam Supervisor, I move to grant the appeal in part regarding the name and to grant, to deny the appeal in part regarding any, any phone number or email.
Support. Question made by Clerk Seeger. May but Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes nay? Motion passes. All right. No, that's a hard one. No, it's good. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Three minutes for public comment. We do not comment back. The board can have comment, will have comment after, but it's just for you to talk to the board so we can hear you. I'm going to start online. Okay, and Clerk Segras has two written comments.
All right, I have two written comments. The first, from David in the public, in the front row. It is actually a question. He comes often, so he knows we're not going to answer that question in real time, but that someone will get back with him by the end of this meeting. Is the Boston Market Restaurant abandoned? It's getting overgrown, lights are falling off the building. Is the township aware of it? So, apparently, something going on at the Boston Market. August 8, 2023. I am sorry I can't be with you to deliver this in person, but I am writing in my absence to speak in response to certain citizen comments made at the July 11 Canton Township Board Meeting and to express my feelings of gratitude about the inclusive and welcoming Canton Township environment I have enjoyed for the past 10 years. A little about me, I have been a Canton resident for 22 years. I am 61-year-old white heterosexual, married, mother of two adult children as such. I have the privilege of being largely well-received in the majority of communities of which I am a part due to frankly, the color of my skin and my heterosexuality as a member of the majority. I have also largely been spared the microaggressions leveled at those who have visible ethnic, religious, cultural, gender, and sexual minority statuses. I do have one invisible minority status that was not embraced when I was growing up or still today. This is one reason I know a little about what it feels like to face prejudice and discrimination. I also know about it as a licensed clinical psychologist who treats many trauma survivors who have experienced marginalization throughout their lives by strangers, members of their communities, and sadly even their families of origin. At the July Board Meeting shortly after a proud outside event, several citizens commented about the pride flag that hangs in Clerk Segras's office. All who spoke negatively about it were older white citizens. Some said it offended them. One said if the flag can be displayed, why not a Confederate flag? One asked for a heterosexual flag to be displayed. Some asked for a Cant, an American flag to be hung. Instead, though, American flags are hung throughout the township building. A couple of these citizens were also confrontational with the board members and disruptive of the proceedings. Like me, these citizens have most likely been privileged as the members of the majority in Canton. This is not to say that they, like me, have not had their share of hardships in their lives, but they, like me, have probably been spared the microaggressions and outright discrimination faced by people with minority statuses. They probably, are you timing me? Probably should have.
Do one more minute.
This is a long paragraph. They probably largely take for granted that they are generally well-received and represented in their community. This is often not true in general for people with minority statuses, including LGBTQ folks. When I was growing up, people in the minority were encouraged to assimilate and accommodate to the larger white and by extension heterosexual cultural, culture, and they were supported in that by a colorblind and differences-blind ideology that worked frankly only for majority. The last few decades have illuminated a backlash against the ideology of people, ideology as people of minority statuses increasingly want to be recognized as different but equal invalid and the Canton Government officials and Board of Trustees in their planning of community events and even displaying the pride flag are actively recognizing and honoring that momentum. The times are changing and the change is hard for people, especially older white people like myself. I don't know how long the citizens who commented.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Going on still.
Thank you. All right.
That was Lauren Earls. Thank you, Lauren. I apologize.
Thank you.
For not reading faster.
That's all right. So, I'm looking online for any public comment. If you can raise your hand, there's five attendees online. If you want any public comment, please raise your hand. You're able to do that using Zoom. Any public comment? No public comment online? Okay, so, public comment in the room, and I will put the clock up so people can watch their time. I know. Anyone in the room with public comment? Please come up to the podium.
George Miller. I have a question here. I have a meeting, it was evidently a study session on June 3 of this year. Mr. Colbeck had five minutes there. We only have three minutes. I'd like to know why, how that come about. He got five minutes. Right off the bat, you give him five minutes. I spoke there and another gentleman spoke there. And neither one of us are on this report. We didn't get censored, did we? Now, the next question I have, I'd like to just issue about the water. Six o'clock in the morning, if I'm watering my property, we build a water pumping station over here on Joy Road to help that and so we could get a discount on off-hours and buy the water cheaper. I'd like to know why there's water breaks that time in the morning because at six o'clock in the morning, there's less people using the water. Not everybody's taking a bath, not everybody's washing dishes, not everybody's washing their car. So, I'd like to know what seems to be the problem with the water main breaks here in this township. And anyway, they have pumping stations every so often. There's only 15 or 20 pounds of pressure on the faucet. So, where do you get your pressure when you have a fire is that pump truck out there. And when you're, they're on the block for about two blocks, you can't hardly get water out of the spigot. Now, another thing I'd like to address, I've addressed it over there on, I like what we can do to clean up Van Born Road from Canton Center Road all the way to Hanon Road. Trash haulers seem to dump everything off their trucks there. I'd like to know when that can be cleaned up. And when it rains over there, a lot of places in that need to be trusted, the county, you have to shut down the road because it floods. It's brim on the road, it's two foot high, and the water has nowhere to run off. From Canton Center Road and Van Born all the way to Hanon, back and forth. Now, one other question, I'd like to know, I addressed it. There was a dump evidently closed 25 acres or 50 acres on Hanon Road years ago. One of the two. They raised it 50 foot. When that dump was closed, if it was closed, I'd like, we can get the information from the state. If it was closed, and it's been sitting there 20 years, they raised it 50 foot. They're not allowed to do that. Once it's closed, they're not allowed to touch it. Next thing is, I'd like to know why, if they're storing dirt there and then a waste management comes back years later and says, okay, we're going to take 25 foot off it, and they get into the trash, was there, and disturb it. I'd like to know, since you're the leader of the township, if you could find that information out. Because I've called and the state doesn't seem to be very getting with it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Okay.
Daniel McCoslin, 328 North Hagerty Road, 43-year resident. Heard four good quotes here tonight. Driven by data, interrupting patterns, needed accountability, and rowing in the same direction. So, I'd like those to be applied as what I'm going to tell you here. I've had the pleasure to attend the Master Plan Studies, which I find very enlightening. Thanks to Patrick and Aaron, they've been very enlightening. And to engage with the residents and listen to the discussion and the dialogue, I think this is part of something we need to add to the Master Plan Studies is, what is the feasibility of becoming a city? I know that back in 2017, I was told that there was talk of it. I was never included in it. I never saw any publications about it, but I guess it did happen and it was foregoed and we wanted to remain a township. The pros I do see in having conversation with people about becoming a city would be we could gain control and seek a quality infrastructure through maintenance, upgrades, and so much past neglect by Wayne County. We could provide for a more local government control. We could keep our financial stability in our borders. We can, we could keep the dollars in the city. We could form a local jurisdiction eliminating outside sources or agencies. Being such as Wayne County, we could provide a higher, a higher level of quality of living for our residents and businesses. We'd have the ability to be innovative, creative, develop new policies and procedures, not having to answer to any outside agencies or other entities that would preclude us by now that we are a township. Here's the rumors that I hear. The taxes will rise. There's too many residences already. There's too many people here to become a city. The process would take just too long. In talking to people who form cities, they say some of that might not be factual because the tax could be set by the city charter itself. There is no residential limit on when to form a city. And generally, the take, the time takes between three to four years, but in the exception here in Canton, some of the groundwork has already been done. For example, in 2017 or 2018, if it would have been adopted to become a city, we have already would have been one. So, when you, when you take those four, when you take those four acronyms, needed accountability, that's something Wayne County has failed us for, for the last 43 years as me being a resident here. You know, we're constantly covering for the county. We're covering for the county. The township does a good job. The residents do a good job here. There's a lot of proud people live here, a lot of people that are very involved with their properties and homes, but you can drive down the road and you can see, you know, broken streets, broken curbs, broken, which is county's jurisdiction. You can see the failing infrastructure. You can see the broken and plug, you know, drain pipes when we see major storms. And I just think that we are missing a huge opportunity here, along with this Master Plan Study, to look at the feasibility. And I'm not saying, I don't know, good, bad, or indifferent, but if we don't study it, how could we know it applies? And it seems like we're taking a no direction. We're going to remain a township, but the residents in these meetings are really clamoring to say, why are we not a city? Because townships are usually looked at as rural settings and cities are looked at as urban settings. And I think we've reached to the point, we're not a farm community anymore, we're an urban community. And we're a pretty good urban community, but you really don't, you really don't.
Thank you, Mr. McCoslin. Thank you.
The three minutes is up? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next? Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Lauren Yipe. And I am here tonight because I saw the video of the last township meeting and I was appalled by some of the comments that were made, especially comments that equated the pride flag with flags of genocidal regimes, including the Confederate flag and the Nazi flag, particularly considering that the Nazis targeted the LGBTQ community in their extermination plans. And there were comments that talked about pride dividing our country and community and they questioned the purpose and need of Black History Month and Pride. And I want to say that these are not intended to be special treatment for any group. These events exist because these communities have faced discrimination, violence, and erasure of their history and culture. And the purpose of these events is to draw light to that and to encourage us all to learn about these communities and the true history of our country. And it's disheartening to see continued attacks against minority groups by our community members just because they have been reminded that they exist. I think that pride and other commemorative events are not divisive. I believe that fear, bigotry, and white supremacy are divisive, and they have divided our country since the very beginning. And I think that what really unites us is our shared idea of the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness. And we can only achieve that if we are honest and respect the truth of the past and the present. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? No? Okay, thank you. Let me see, public comment is closed. Actually, let me just make sure online and get somebody else. Okay, all right. Does the staff have anything? Any events you want to talk about or?
I don't know if you've talked about the fire station funding because I think this is the first board meeting since then. You may want to talk about that.
Right, Representative Pury also was able to get us the fire station funding for the fourth fire station in southeastern corner of Michigan, which is going to help us with some of our response times and actually our mutual aid. So, I know.
Official, when the budget got signed in this week, right?
Right, I know. Yeah, Chief Stockline has been pushing for this for a long time.
Well, I think the support of the board and the relationships with the representative is, is what really did it. So, we're very fortunate to get that $7 million. Looking forward to having a new station.
Right. That's a good, good idea, good point. Anyone else? No? No? Okay, and the board, start down there. Tanya?
I really don't have anything to say, but I really appreciate the public comments that were made today, you know, about the meeting two weeks ago and also about, you know, I still am learning and it was a good point made about the city and the township. And I would like to learn more about that.
Thank you. Summer?
I don't have anything really to add. I do appreciate several of the emails that we got this week of support and thank you to the public comment about the pride flag. Really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Michael?
We had a very awesome weekend with National Night Out. That was a huge success. I don't know, were you talking about this later?
No, go ahead.
You got remarks or?
No, I, go ahead.
I didn't look at your notes.
No.
I had fun. We, I brought my kids after work on Friday and we had our employee picnic right away, which was awesome. It was well-attended. It was great to show the employees that we appreciate them. And I was super grateful to a local credit union, the schools and government, local school and government credit union, I believe, that was the founder. They fundraised and they donated us a lot of the food and some of the stuff. We have an internal employee committee that organized it and put it on and it's, it was awesome. It's awesome. Because since pandemic, we really struggled with staffing and things like that. It's not easy. It's not easy in the private sector, it's not even easy in the public sector either. So, we, it's fun, it's good to show people we care and that they're appreciated. That was a great event. Went to the splash pad with the new, brand-new shade sales, which is phenomenal. Super grateful for that because it gets hot at the splash pad and that's good for safety. It's good for the health of children and adults who are there with them to be shielded from the rays of the sun. We had a peace pole dedication ceremony that I'm sure I won't be the only one talking about tonight. That was fantastic. My four and two-year-old had such a good time at the splash pad. I was five minutes late to the peace pole designation ceremony. And then that turned into National Night Out and then Tuesdays are, or wait.
Thursday.
Oh, it was Thursday? All right, it was Thursday, this is Friday. I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old, so my brain is not always functioning on all cylinders. That was a great day. And then, anyway, so it was a good, good weekend, great events since the last time. Extremely grateful, obviously, for the funding for ASR, as I talked about before, and for the fire station. Canton Township was able to earn back $16 million of our tax dollars from the state of Michigan in this last budget cycle, which is three times more than we've ever gotten in the past in the history of Canton Township. That is awe-inspiring and I am extremely grateful for that. There are years where we have gotten absolutely nothing. And, and Canton is a donor. And, and Canton is a donor community, not just Wayne County, but it's the state of Michigan. So I'm really grateful for that. And, and it's fire, and it's substance use, and mental health, and investing in our teens, and it's roads. And that's the basic stuff. That's the stuff that really ultimately matters. I will answer the comment about former Senator Patrick Kolbeck for the fourth time. We, this board is a legislative body in the sense that we vote on the budget. We vote on ordinances, we vote on policies, we vote on resolutions. We're a mini legislature, just like the Wayne County Commission or the state legislature or Congress. What's cool about townships is we aren't just all legislators. Some of us are executives, and we have a dual role. But every once in a while, a township board acts in what we call a quasi-judicial capacity. And we get to slowly make our way into the third branch of government, if we're going to talk about that three-ring circus. So we've got the legislative, check. Sometimes, some of us are executives. And then sometimes, we act as quasi-judicial, like if we revoke somebody's permit to sell ice cream, they appeal in a hearing to the township board. If we deny somebody's tobacco license to sell a hookah, for a hookah lounge, they would appeal to the township board in a quasi-judicial setting. And the way judicial settings or quasi-judicial hearings go, like a FOIA appeal denial, is that the individual who is appealing a decision of the executive for denial, they get five minutes to speak. It's not public comment. They're indicating why they should, why my decision is bad and should be overturned to the board. And then the administration is given five minutes to respond. I took liberties with that at that hearing, which is, I shouldn't have done, but I did. And then what's cool about quasi-judicial hearings is it, it actually benefits the applicant, the person who wants an appeal, because they get a second bite at the apple, and they get to speak last. So they speak first. I get to counter, or sometimes the chief of police does if there's a public safety issue or the fire, if there's a fire issue. And then they get to respond or rebut the township administration. So they actually get 10 minutes to speak, and the administration gets five minutes to speak. And in a perfect world, that takes 15 minutes. When it's disruptive, it takes longer. But that's how a quasi-judicial hearing works. And that's when we're acting in our judicial capacity or quasi-judicial capacity. And we've entered into the third realm of government. So that was not public comment. And the limits set forth are to protect someone's due process rights under the 14th Amendment. They're not limits on the First Amendment when you're addressing a legislative body at public comment. So you've made your way out of one ring, and you're into a different ring. That's the answer. And that answer will not change, but I look forward to saying it again.
So to summarize what Mr. Seegras said, Mr. Miller, Mr. Kolbeck was in a hearing. That's why he got five minutes. He was not in public comment. Public comment's three minutes, hearings are five. He was in a hearing. So there you go. Thank you.
We need to read this, yeah?
Okay.
We never got this.
Kate, okay, okay. Mr., Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
Not on the record.
Mr. Miller? Kate, you want to speak?
So I was going to say something different, but we had a little bit of a repeat of what happened last time as far as behavior. So I want to remind everyone that we sit and listen to you, and when it's our turn, then you sit and listen to us. That being said, I also appreciated the emails and the comments that were made tonight and the emails we, we received since our July 11th meeting that addressed some of the very disparaging comments that were made at that July 11th meeting. It was quite upsetting, I think, for those of us who listened. And for those who watched it on TV, I'm sure it was equally upsetting. I also, going on a more happy note, also wanted to agree with my fellow trustees who talked about the, the windfall that Canton received from the state budget. And I'd like to thank Representative Pury for his hard work on that. I think it's just awesome that we're going to be able to do some of the things that are so needed in our community, so.
Stephen?
I won't reiterate what everyone else has said, but I do agree with it. And just wanted to add that I've just been reflecting lately how wonderful it is that, for the most part, our community and society is back to normal after a pandemic. And we are having what is essentially, maybe not weather-wise, but a normal summer of events and people doing things and traveling and, yeah. I was in a, a work meeting today with 30 people in a boardroom, and I just reflected back on how two years ago, or even less than two years ago, that would not be acceptable to have that many people in a room together, unmasked, having a conversation about business or whatever, or us being able to do that. I don't want to forget what we went through. I, we don't have to ever go through it again. But I'm glad that we're able to live normally for, at least have been for this year, and hope it goes well on into the future.
Thank you. Diane?
I agree with everything my colleagues have said. And another good note is that August 19th, or August 18th will be the, the ratification of the 19th Amendment. So that's a, a good thing that we want to celebrate every year, always. Love to vote. And as for the water rates, you know, since we've had the water tower put in, we've been able to, to stabilize the, the water rates. We've been very fortunate with that. And so over the last few, I can tell you, you know, in 2019, we were paying $11.51. In '20, the same. And then '21, it went down to $10.25. And then the last two years, it's been $10.62. So that has really helped keep our water rates stable, which I do appreciate, and I, I know our residents do too. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question about Boston Market. And just to let you know, we are, our ordinance is working with them. I don't know, Jade, if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I can't speak for ordinance. I know they are out there trying to communicate with the property owner and sending out notice of violations. But Public Works did go out and actually mow. We're treating it as a vacant property at this point and just putting in our mow schedule because of the location of where it's at.
Thank you. Do you also want to comment on GFL? We've had a lot of calls this week about missed pickups.
I guess my comment to that would be that we're working with GFL on a daily basis, submitting our missed pickups to them. They are getting out to them as quickly as possible. They're obviously still having staffing issues. And for the, for the duration of the season, compost is going to stay on Saturdays. It's not going to be picked up Monday through Friday because they are still behind and delayed on certain days with trash and recycle pickup. So, but we are continuing to work with them. So if there's still concerns out there, if you go to the website, you can fill out the form or you can give us a call, and we'll make sure that we get out there to get, get everything picked up as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And we are holding GFL accountable and looking at other alternatives also. Just a little-
Yes, I believe the deputy supervisor and myself have a meeting supposed to be scheduled with the, with our law firm to talk about that process and kind of next steps.